Ladies and gentlemen, I'll call this meeting to order. Can I get a motion, please, that the agenda for the May 7th, 2019, regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Councilor Byer will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing not all those in favor, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that the minutes of the April 16th, 2019, special meeting of council be adopted as presented? Councilor Srinath will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing not all those in favor, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that the minutes of the April 18th, 2019, regular meeting of council be adopted as presented? Councilor Bevan will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing not all those in favor, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that the minutes of the April 23rd, 2019, special meeting of council be adopted as presented? Deputy Mayor Sorenson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing not all those in favor, motion carried. We have no public hearings and no delegations. Moving on to reports from administration. Can I get a motion, please, that council approve the revised 2019 operating budget as presented? Councilor Curry will make that motion. And we do have Ms. Bittner, who has joined us up front. I think we've discussed this quite a bit at committee. I don't know if you have anything you would like to add, Ms. Bittner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, most of the things we did discuss at committee. One thing, the additional item that I put onto the memo here was when we did the budget back in sort of October to get ready for the budget workshop, we estimated how much we'd need to carry over for the continuation of the demolition of the RET complex. At that time, we estimated about 50. It came to my attention after our last committee meeting that it really needed to be about 180. So we've, I've just carried over a little bit more for the budget for 19. It was funded from a reserve, so it has no effect on taxation or anything. It's just a matter of moving some more money over to finish off that demolition in 2019.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bittner. Council Wilkinson.
Through the chair to Ms. Bittner. What was our total cost of demolition of that RET complex?
I'm not exactly sure of the, sorry, through the chair to Council Wilkinson, I'm not sure of the exact final cost. I know the budget was 400, and this is the remainder of that 400 that has been transferred.
So we're not over 400 yet?
We'll move over to Mr. Dierka.
Thank you, yes, I can add to that to the chair. Yeah, we anticipate being within the $400,000 budget. We do not have a final cost because the project isn't quite finished up yet, but we are confident it'll be within the existing budget.
I'm pleased, Deputy S.
Thank you, Council Wilkinson. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing not all, I'll call the question. All those in favor, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council approved the revised 2019 capital budget as presented? Council Bevan will make that motion. And Ms. Bittner, is there any other changes since committee?
Not since committee. I did, just in front of you, you'll see, I had admitted to put last year's budget that had been approved just for comparison's sake. So if council's interested, that paper is there for you to have a look at. But this is basically just, it was just summarizing what we had discussed at committee.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bittner. Council Srinath.
Just the one on the street rehab where we had, I know we discussed that committee whole, but 6.5 million, and we're not doing all this street rehab, so the money we allocate or we carrying that over for next year for the reserve so we can spend more, because in the past, we probably averaged, you know, four to five million dollars a year because it's important to us. So I'm looking at it, if we're not spending this year due to tendering, then are we carrying, and if we are, how much are we carrying over so next year we can do double the amount?
So through the, through the chair to Council Srinath, we are carrying some money over. If the attached reserve sheets, you'll notice the projected GRI for 2019 is about 2.3 million more than what was in there for 18. That's that additional reserve money being transferred to infrastructure reserves specifically for infrastructure projects in the future.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Council Byer.
Through the chair to administration. I was recollecting after reading this the other day. Didn't we decide to set some money aside for the 25th Street and First Ave. infrastructure project on the roads there with the government for 2019? And I was just wondering.
CEO Dierka.
Thank you. Speaking of the first half by the provincial building, is that what you're?
No, on the east side of town there.
Oh, no, thank you, yes. No, that is a commitment that we've made, but it will not be until a future date, more likely 2021 or 2022.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And just further to Council Srinath's point, some of the allocation of that 6.5 million went to other projects, including the emergent issues of the snow dump, landfill, and other things. So I just wanted to clarify that as well. Council Curry.
Through the chair to Ms. Bittner. Are we, so we had discussed at committee the Vision Park well and washrooms and the lagoon receiving station as possible, including? This budget does not include those, or is it? I'm missing it.
No, it's there. It's under the infrastructure.
Yeah, just to clarify that, if I may, the, for the Vision Park well and washroom, that is for design of the project, not completion, but yes, it is included in that. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And the lagoon receiving station is planned for construction, for completion.
I see it, sorry. I was just reading your.
Okay, thank you, Council Curry. Council Srinath.
The other one was the bench creek stabilization, like we have 814, and of course, I know we've tendered it and it went up. So it's 814 this year, the remaining probably 300,000 came from last year's budget. Am I reading this correctly? Because I was just looking at it, because I think it's now finally done, but it's still 814 this year's. Okay, I just want to clarify a station on that.
Thanks, Cory.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing not all, all those in favor, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council approve a time extension for subdivision application 2018 TOE 002 relating to the lands legally described as Plan 63084, 6384 AC Block 135 Lots 1 and 2, for an additional eight months and 14 days to now expire on December 31st, 2019? Council Bevan will make that motion, and we have Ms. Andy Chambault with us, as well as our development officer, so take it away.
Thank you, Your Worship. We have Ms. Lisa Resick, our new development officer here, for those who haven't met her, and she's going to do her first council presentation today, so please be gentle on her.
Ann is here to make sure you guys behave, I think.
I think, yeah, I didn't want to say.
Through the chair, thank you, Ann. Thank you, Your Worship, through to the, or, sorry. All the required information in the report is there, however, I do have a short visual presentation. So as you mentioned, the subject property is at 4340 Fifth Avenue. If you look on the screen, there is a map showing where the subdivision is and that it was approved back in April 30th of 2018. The subdivision was to subdivide land into two lots for residential purposes, and the applicant applied for the time extension prior to the expiry date of April 30th, 2019. And administration does recommend approval for this time extension. And this is because the applicant applied for the time within the expiry date, and there's no physical changes, as you can see on the plan of survey. There has been no changes to the location or any concerns that we're aware of, and just that external referrals are to be noted if council chooses to, chooses to grant the The time extension, so these are the conditions that were completed, the plan of survey, which is shown on the previous slide. And remaining conditions include property taxes, the endorsement fee, and a subdivision development agreement for installation of water services managed by our public works and the landowner. And of course, after endorsement, any required easements or right-of-ways on the property to service the lot. And this is the full subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Council Srinath.
I'm in favor of the extension, but did they give a main reason? I'm understanding right, it is a subdivision thereafter. So is there a main reason why they're held up?
Through to Mr. Chair, to Counselor. The reason is for financial reasons. The owner, landowner, just needs a little more time to come up with the remaining condition fees and the matter.
All right, thank you. Council Wilkinson.
I'd like to make a motion and we accept this subdivision.
We already have a motion on the table.
Oh, you have an motion?
Yeah, we have a motion on the table.
Oh, wait, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, you missed that.
Councilor Sorenson.
Through the chair to administration. I couldn't find in our package, but it looked like on your map there that the lot, the lot is being divided equally in half into two equal parts.
That is, oh, through to the chair, that is correct, Counselor. It is equally subdivided to what it was before. It looks like in the past, it was consolidated from two lots, and now it's just being re-subdivided, subdivided again into two equal lots.
There's no issues with the house being too close to the property line and easements needed or anything like that?
There was concern in the report, however, this was a decision that was already approved, sorry, through the chair to Counselor. There was a variance granted, that's correct, prior. External affairs, referrals such as Alberta Transportation did grant a variance under the subdivision and development regulations for Section 14 being too close to the highway, but within 1.6 kilometers, but that variance was granted. But in terms of the house being too close to the boundary, that was a consideration and a possible, a variance for future concern upon approval.
All right, thanks, Lisa. It's okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, all those opposed, motion carried. Good job, thank you. Can I get a motion, please, that council refuse the time extension with respect to the subdivision endorsement, 2017 TOE 006 relating to the lands legally described as Plan 0122165 Block 1 Lot 9, based on administration's recommendation? Councilor Srinath will make that motion, and we'll hand it over to our development department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, all that is required, all information that is required is on the report, but I will go through a short visual presentation for you. So the subject property is on the west end of Edson. It is, has been previously approved on October 23rd, 2017, and the subject parcel would, or the applicant would like to subdivide into two parcels that are separate, separated by a 40-meter arterial road. So as you can see on the map, this would be the entire parcel, and it would be subdivided, leaving this lot subdivided and this being the remnant parcel. This is separated by a arterial road that would soon become Fourth Avenue. So administration recommends council refuse the time extension. The subdivision application has expired for several months pursuant to Section 657, Part 4 of the Municipal Government Act, and the West Area Structure Plan is currently being drafted and referred to with landowners, but has not yet been approved. And the external referrals that were previously addressed may not be willing to extend their conditions that they've previously been given to the landowner, and they have not been given an opportunity to review or revise any of their comments. So the main purpose here is that it's been, the application is expired. It was approved October 23rd, it expired October 23rd, 2018, and it's now April, when, April 15th, when they apply for an extension.
If I could add something, Your Worship. There, the planning department contacted this applicant prior to his subdivision expiring. By email, I believe they sent him an application, telephoned him. It's not news that it expired, but then at a later date, this matter came up, and so we bring it.
Okay, thank you. We'll go with Council Wilkinson.
Through the chair to administration. How long has this West End study been going on? Because I think I've heard about it a long time.
All right, go ahead.
Quite a number of years. It's actually in the early stages right now. The West, I can bring up the picture. So this is the West End Area Structure Plan. It's been around for a couple of years, but right now, it's still at the beginning stages where we're speaking to the landowners for their input on how it, pretty much for their input, because this is a conceptual scheme. It's malleable, ready to be changed if the landowners do have valid, or certain concerns.
And if I could also add, there has been talk of a structure plan, as Ms. Resick said, for a couple of years. At the time, that piece of property, the whole West End, is a very large piece of property, and it's also very visible from the highway. And one of the things that we found was because the lands, there's actually only four landowners in there, and some of the parcels of land are almost unmanageable for them. And we were finding that people were coming to us, starting at this time, at the end of 2017, and during that time, asking us for, you know, subdivisions that were kind of piecemealing it. And normally, a person pays for their own area structure plan, and the area structure plan, do you know, where, a basic plan where you're going to have your roads and your lot sizes, and, I mean, whether you're going to have commercial or residential, they're always changeable, but whether it's industrial, those type of things, where we indicate. And what happened was, we decided to apply for what's called a CARES grant, and I believe we discussed this recently. It's a grant that is something that you can do for the community that is good for them economically, developmentally wise. And so what we did, we see, we applied for that so that we could actually get the grant to pay for a conceptual scheme for the West End ASP. We got this about January. And what we did then was we moved forward with it being actually active on it and said, what we're going to do is we're going to use the grant to pay for this, so that everybody has some sort of a framework to follow when they subdivide, so they're not kind of in the dark. So we did start on this in around January when we got the grant, and we began meeting with the four main landowners. Now, it's been brought to this point, it's getting close, and there are some lots, if you looked closer or came and looked at the documents, they actually are, there's lines in between them that are dotted instead of the hard lines, so it shows that some lots can be made smaller or added on to other ones to give a little bit more of, you know, be a little bit more agile for the applicant. So anyway, that's where we're at now. We're still working on the ground, we're getting close. A local firm is finishing off, and then we'll be able to bring this forward for something that they can all follow, and that way, we get a nice, things like stormwater management and those types of things are done globally on the whole area, so you get a better, a better job as then.
Sorry, just as a follow-up. Was this conceptual plan made when he, or whoever this person is, got the development permit in the first place?
If you don't mind me answering, so here, our development officer was not there at that time. Yes, the four main landowners have been consulted, and again, we just recently sent them this final letter and asked if they had any further contributions prior to us going forward, because this would go into the bylaw stage where it would have to have an open house before second reading. But we want to get everything that the affected landowners think prior to that. So they've had quite a bit of consultation, to my knowledge, on this.
I guess I'm just surprised that we granted it to them, and now we don't want to.
Council Wilkinson, Council Chair now has the vote, thank you.
Through the chair to Ann, or this is, sorry, the title of my screen answer. So it expired, you contacted, following right, you contacted them for letting go, and then they didn't want to do the extension, and now, I'm trying to figure out how much time has elapsed, now they're saying, yes, I want an extension?
Through to the chair to Counselor. Yes, so the time that it expired was October 23rd of 2018, and the applicant was notified in September through writing and to notify the applicant that the expiry was coming up. It wasn't until January that the applicant came in and requested an extension. Administration at that time did refer them to, or advise them to reapply because it hasn't had its expiry date. It wasn't until April 15th of this year that the applicant chose to apply for a time extension. So it was about five months after the fact of expiry.
One follow-up.
Okay. I'm just thinking from our work, because I don't know who the applicant is, but I'm thinking in this case, they let it expire, some following through, so in January, they came back. So granting an extension, would that be more work for you to just say, start over again or carry on? Because there's a lot of work that's been involved through the town, trying to get this, you know, following through. So I'm trying to figure out what is easier to say, yes, we're going to grant them the extension, because we approved it once. So if they go through it, then time will lapse by, like whatever it takes, six to eight weeks. So I'm trying to figure out, well, what is the easiest, yes, grant them the extension or make them start over and then it comes before council again?
Through to the chair.
CEO Dierka. Yeah, I'll take that one. Thank you, Council Srinath. So I think one of the elements here is, we're certainly not motivated administratively by what is easiest, we're motivated by what will produce the best outcomes. And one of the reasons we have the timelines associated with subdivision applications, as is noted in the report and in the presentation, is things can change, and external agencies such as Alberta Transportation, or utility companies, or other landowners, they have a right to be properly consulted as a part of the subdivision process. And so we feel at this point administratively that it's critical that we restart that process to ensure that all those things are still in place. Presumably, if none of those things have changed materially, there's no reason that administration wouldn't probably recommend this for approval if they were to reapply. But those processes are in place to ensure good decision-making and good opportunities for consultation to other stakeholders in the process as well.
And if I could add, timely, timely decision-making is critical.
Thank you, Council Byer.
Through the chair to administration. So it's my understanding, based on the report, you mentioned that you are following the rules within the MGA, and that if the applicant would like to reapply, there was nothing preventing them from, to reapply for a subdivision as per what it would be at that time? Correct?
Through to the chair, you're asking if, before he met the expiry, it would be fine to extend? Or, sorry, can you repeat that?
If it could be applied at any time.
So at this stage in the process, they could, they could reapply for, there would be nothing stopping them from reapplying for the subdivision if it was refused?
Oh, that's correct. Yes, they can reapply.
Council Sorenson.
Would, if this motion passed, or, I'm wondering if I need to make a, need to amend this motion or not, but would it be possible to approve this motion and then waive in the, an application fee in the near future? Through council to administration.
Ann, I would defer to you on that.
Your Worship, the fees are set by the fees bylaw. So council set the bylaw, if council decides to waive a fee, it would have to be a council motion, and you would be the only ones that could do it. Administration would not.
I would, I would only just add to that, that I caution strongly against that. It becomes a really difficult situation if fees or penalties or things are waived for any number of reasons, because then it becomes an evaluation of circumstance, and that becomes a very challenging, challenging thing to do. Unless the applicant was to display some manner of hardship, I would not recommend that council consider waiving those fees.
All right, thank you. You have any follow-up? Council Bevan.
Yeah, through the chair to administration. Excuse me. I know in previous council, we were also looking at the area structure plan, and I know administration worked very hard with all the landowners out there to get them on board and, you know, to be transparent, and they went around and around and around, many, many months, probably in a year or two in that. I'd like to stay with this here. I don't want to give them the approval of that. I would rather us move forward, they have the grant and stuff like that. If we do one extension to somebody else with an extra fee on it, where do we stop for anybody else in that? It just gets too hard, too cumbersome, it just opens up a whole new can of worms. So I'm in favor of not giving the extension at this time.
All right, thank you, Council Bevan. Council Curry.
Through the chair. I'm assuming that when he was contacted, he, she was contacted in September, that they were made aware of the difference in the fees versus an extension and reapply? Would that have been part of our normal process?
Through to the chair, that is a normal process. The letter that was given to the applicant did indicate that the expiry was coming up in a month's time, and the options were to pay for the endorsement fee or to apply for the extension if he or she needed more time. So it was stated to the applicant.
So they were aware?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Council Srinath.
On this permit, was there ever an extension from the original? Like I didn't see, so from the original time this individual applied, they never had an extension in the past, correct?
Through to the chair, to my knowledge, that is correct.
All right, thank you. Just some comments here. So when I initially seen this, I was not really in favor of the refusal, but, you know, after further thought and information here today and some of the questions council asked, I think it's really important that we follow the process. It becomes very difficult when you take a development or a subdivision and treat somebody differently than others have been treated. You create a whole bunch of problems when you do that. There's opportunity for this particular individual to restart the process. They did have the option of extending, they chose not to at that time. Obviously, things have changed for them, but I will be supporting this motion to refuse the time extension. And I don't think it's a wise decision to be waiving fees, either as Council Bevan indicated. It does become, it does become a problem because people feel like certain individuals are getting treated differently than others, and that's not a, that's not a good position to be in, so. So I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, and is everybody clear on what the motion is? Okay. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that council approved the cancellation of the regularly scheduled June 4th, 2019 council meeting due to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM Conference? Council Bevan will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing not all those in favor, motion carried. And we move on to reading of bylaws. Can I get a motion, please, that council give first reading to the 2019 Mill Rate Bylaw Number 2231? Council Srinath will make that motion, and we have Ms. Bittner here with us, who can walk us through the Mill Rate Bylaw. It's very exciting.
It is extremely exciting, yes. Every year, we need to pass a Mill Rate Bylaw before the taxes go out. That sets all the mill rates for the different non-res and residential and school, et cetera, portions of our tax notices. As you can see, we have in the memo here, we've. As you can see, we have in the memo here, we've just noticed that we can look at total assessment or taxable assessment, so total is everything including all the exempt properties, but of course, they don't help with our taxation. So just pop down to the taxable assessment. We can see it increased slightly by 1.27 percent, so there's a slight increase in taxable assessment. We did have a budget increase of 3.9, so that's sort of left us, if we go to the page with the mill rates on there, with an increase there in our municipal mill rates from last year to this year, 2.9 for residential and 2.2 for non-residential. The Evergreens mill rate is set based on the requisitions that they require from us, so they give us the amounts that we need, we set the mill rate for that. And the school one is, if you remember, we are doing like an estimated one this year because we don't have those figures in. And the school, the school mill rates are set based on the amount of money we need to collect for that as well. The school and the Evergreens one, we send them directly on, they're not kept within the municipality. So the municipal mill rate is the one that gets us the money that municipality uses for its operations for the year. We request that there's three readings today, just because the notices are due to be sent out on the 15th, and there's no other Council meeting between now and that date.
All right. I'll open the floor, questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Sharnard.
Okay, so I'm just going to clarify the numbers. So I'm looking at just the increase, so the actual percentage, will that change from what we said in December? Because I'm just trying to figure out, because it says plus eight, and I'm just trying to determine the numbers. So I understand the mill rate, but the tax rate we're going to charge the individuals?
Sorry, through the Chair to Counsel Sharnard. The budget increase was 3.9 percent, that hasn't changed at all.
Okay. So they'll still get 3.9?
If I may just add to that, through the Chair, it's incredibly important, remember that we don't refer to individuals when we speak about this, because the effect is driven solely by the assessment of the property. So if their assessment has changed significantly, that has the biggest impact on whether or not they will see an increase or decrease in taxation in any given year. And so when we look at this, we're looking at the effect that it has on the entire community.
Okay, because I, no, I'm just looking at, we're in the plus eight combined, so what we set with the 3.9, that's what we're going to be charging, because I do understand the mill rate, if your property went up or down, it will affect your total bill, but it's still 3.9 like we went, because, where it's really, when it says the plus numbers on there?
Thank you, just to clarify, I don't think there's anywhere where it says plus eight. I think it lists the combined mill rate in the eights and then says that it's plus 3.5 percent from, just to clarify, so...
And that's all, just getting clarification, I make sure I'm reading it right.
All right, thank you, Counselor Sharnard. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing now, I'll call the question. All those in favor, all those opposed, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that Council gives second reading to Bylaw Number 2231? Counselor Wilkinson will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing now, all those in favor, motion carried. Can I get a motion, please, that 2019 Mill Rate Bylaw Number 2231 be placed for third reading? Counselor Sorensen will make that motion. All those in favor, motion carried. And can I get a motion, please, that Council give third reading to Bylaw Number 2231? And Counselor Bevan will make that motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns? This is the final airing of grievances. Hearing now, all those in favor, motion carried. Thank you. No information items, no sundry items. We're going to move on to Council Committee reports, and I believe we're going back to April 18. We will start with Counselor Bevan.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Counselor Curry.
I also have nothing to report.
Mine's more complicated.
Counselor Sharnard.
I also have nothing to report.
Okay. Counselor Wilkinson?
I thought on April 19, we had a committee meeting.
He did on the 18th.
On the 18th, I saw one.
Sorry.
Apologize.
And we first, I wanted to do the part-time lodge building update.
We'll add that, or your Counselor.
Counselor Sorensen.
On the 25th, I went to the Information Session on Medically at Risk Transportation. The same day, I went to the Alberta Library Conference in Jasper. I have a long report that I'll send to Council, took the law notes. I went to a session on social media, on newsfeed filters that is affecting the types of information we receive, and another one on how great libraries make great communities, they're a center of the community and they drive public conversation. Went to a presentation on the new $235 million Central Library at Calgary, it's amazing. It's a real art piece, it was designed by New York architects, and it's a real gem in Alberta. And then April 30, I went to Evergreen Theater in Vanier, it was sponsored by the Edson District Recycling Society. They give a theater presentation to a variety of schools in the community on recycling and energy conversion, conservation, and climate change.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Sorensen. Counselor Byer.
On April 25, I also attended the Medically at Risk Drivers Presentation at the hospital, and then on the 29, I had a Policy Committee Meeting with Edson Library Board.
Okay. Just to clarify, Marge is not a Council Committee, but Counselor Bevan was there, and I think somebody else was.
She was there.
So...
We were all there.
Okay. All right, moving on, I have just the Steering Committee on April 18, and all the details were announced via news release, and we look forward to the open house that's happening on Thursday. We have no information item, or sorry, no financial items, questions for media and public regarding items from this Council meeting. Go ahead, Ms. Moore.
I just wanted to get this in my head, what the increase would be for the average homeowner. I know it varies according to assessment, but do we have, can you give me a figure as to what, percentage-wise?
Mr. Derikot, do you have some?
I would just suggest that the term that I think is easiest to use and makes the most sense is that the municipal budget is increasing by 3.9 percent. So that just doesn't translate directly to individuals specifically, but most individuals, because assessment is relatively stable, should see around that, that type of change in their taxation. Yeah.
I was also, I believe you, to the Chair and to Mr. Derikot, I believe you mentioned that there someone or somebody might experience a tax decrease, is that possible?
Yes, that is possible. If the assessment has dropped significantly, that could, that certainly could happen.
Yeah. I would describe that as relatively rare circumstance. You'll recall in our community that recently, over the last few years, we engaged a new assessment firm, and they did a very thorough review of our assessment, and through that process, there were properties that saw significant decreases in their assessment. So you could also think of, if there was a very specialized property, I can't think of a good one off the top of my head, but if the market for that property was to change significantly year over year, you could see how that might affect their assessment and lead to a potential decrease. But again, that is a relatively unique or rare circumstance.
And it depends on their improvements they made or improvements close by.
Yeah, generally, market does influence, but also individual property condition or improvements that they make is an influence as well, so.
Okay. And just one more, when will the tax notices go up then?
Sarah?
It will be on May 15. They'll be sent out on May 15.
May 15?
Yes.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions? All right, perfect. Thank you very much. We have no closed meeting session, so can I get a motion for your, Counselor Sharnard? All those in favor, motion carried.